Okay, folks, welcome to the very first and hopefully la- well, it'll be the last one. One more of these to do. But, um, public hearing via Zoom. This is for the 2020-21 warrant articles for our town meeting. As you know, we are doing town meeting this year by referendum vote. And that is driven now by the governor. Because we can't have any more than 50 people in a room at a time. So, here we are. Want to remind everyone that when you are on here, we're gonna have, uh, please, share your video so we know who's here. And also mute your mics. If we called to ask to have you speak, then you can unmute your mics. And we'll go from there. Like I say, this is the first time we've done this, you know, a public hearing by Zoom. So please bear with us. Okay. First couple articles.
Ed, I'm sorry, before you get too far. So we just want to make sure that the participants understand should they have questions because it is a public hearing that we've asked you to, we've asked you to turn the videos on so that we can see if you raise your hand with a question. So if you don't turn your video on, I've said every, sent everybody a request to turn video on. Chosen not to turn that video on, we're going to assume that you don't have any questions. Because if you don't raise your hand, when he goes over a warrant article, he's not gonna know to call on you. If by chance you're calling in via phone, down bottom on your screen, there's a button that says chat. And you can type, you can drop in there. If you hit the chat button, it should pop up on your screen. You can send it to just me or to everybody and you can say, I have a question on Article 25. And I will make sure Ed gets the information and he will call on you. But leaving your video on so I can see your hands is really much easier.
Yep.
Thank you.
Very good. Michelle, if you want to put up the warrant on the screen. Think this will work so we can still see everyone. Yes.
Okay. I'm not gonna explain.
Okay. We're not gonna go over it word for word. We do have another public hearing after this one. On the
Eighth.
July 8th. And that is, that's technically our legal, uh, public hearing. This one here is a public hearing and informational, uh, hearing as well. So. Okay, so the first couple articles, we have choose a moderator. So we're gonna, you know, skip over that one. Uh, elect, elect selectmen. There are two people running to that position. That would be, uh, Kimberly Stacy Horn and, uh, Rollin Waterhouse. Next, let's see, like the school committee members. I don't have
Jeanette Berth and Judith Shane are the two incumbents. And there are two seats, so that's a good time to remind voters that might be, might be listening that they need to, they can choose up to two, but if you only choose one, the other one will count as a blank.
Yep. Okay, somebody has their mic on, please mute your mics. Okay. The next batch is all school, I, nope, next one's a fire truck. So. Um, I think at this time, do we have the fire chief on here?
No, he will be at the official one on July 8th.
Okay. Okay.
But Michelle is prepared to talk numbers. Um, and I know that the board has the information on the actual truck.
Yep. Well, the, yeah, not, there hasn't been a truck chosen.
As far as what?
But
What he asked us for.
Yep. What he's looking for is to replace the, I believe it's an 85 Mack tanker. Uh, 2,500 gallon tanker that they have over there now. There's frame issues and it's not gonna pass inspection during September. So. The numbers are as such, um, actually I'll have Michelle go over the numbers.
Sure. So, um, the article asks to take out a bond, um, up to $330,095 and to offset the cost with this, uh, nearly $70,000 in their, um, capital vehicle fund. For a total purchase up to $400,000. The chief did mention that he'd like to try to find a spec truck or something that might not be brand new. Um, but something that, that isn't really used, um, to save a little money there. So, um, and then we're looking at, of course, we have to go out to bid for both the bond and the truck. Um, so we're looking at some time there. So we're estimating the payments for what we'll have to pay out this year on up to 4% for, um, a five-year term, um, would be $40,000. As of October 1st, the chief said, uh, Tanker 7 will be out of service.
Okay. Means the tanker we have now, I believe it's 35, uh, 2,500 gallons. So it's gonna be whatever you can get, 2,500, 3,000 gallon tank truck. That's still up in the air a little bit, but that's irrelevant to what we're, what we're doing here. We're just approving the money to, uh, be spent for the best interest of the town. So that is the, that's article four on the tank truck. Yes, Mr. Nass. Unmute yourself and speak up, please.
Hi, this is Richard Nass. I just noticed on the warrant, the finance committee seemed to have a, some concerns. Motion failed, two to three to one. Did someone talk about what their concerns were?
I think I heard the chair of the, uh, Warrant and Finance, Dennis, are you there?
He was here. Dennis, can you unmute, please?
If not, Rollin is available. Let's unmute Rollin.
Yep, Rollin, go ahead.
There you go, you're on, Rollin.
You want me to jump into this? The motion failed primarily due to the fact that the members who voted for the motion to fail felt that this was not the time to obligate the town for a $400,000 bond on top of what we already owe on the, uh, Sand and Salt Shed and the Goat Hill Land Purchase. That basically is the bottom line.
Okay. Richard, does that answer your question?
Yeah, thanks, Rollin. This is Richard, thank you.
You're welcome, Richard. It's not to say that, that, uh, the people who, who voted, uh, the article not to pass do not think that the town needs to have a truck. We just don't feel that this is the financially prudent time to do that.
Okay, thank you. Um, it was a decision of the Board of Selectmen to do a bond on this as opposed to taking the money out of undesignated funds and paying for it outright. So, I also know there was a discussion about the truck itself. Uh, one of the members of the Warrant and Finance Committee said that he was opposed to it because he didn't know what he was buying. I don't, my personal opinion is, like I say, we need to approve, the money is what needs to be approved, not the specific truck, Ford, Chevy, Mack, Peterbilt. That's up to the Truck Committee or the Fire Department, um, you know, to put forward to us to, you know, choose the best piece. So.
When we were talking about doing this fire truck, um, I, I'm not gonna take credit for the, the bond, but I felt, um, that we were in a predicament where, yes, we have a fire truck that's gonna be uninspectable here shortly. Um, with this COVID thing and everything else going on, that we had to make a decision whether or not, you know, we're gonna keep the tax rate at the same. And this was really the only way we could have done it without taking it out of designated fund. Uh, we could have taken it out of designated fund, but like we're talking right now, you know, the monies that aren't coming in and everything else, we're not sure. This truck was gonna be bought at some point in time, this year, next year, a year after. But it really looked at this point right now where the bond, what it did is it bought us a year. We can pay that bond off next year if we feel like it. We can pay that town shut off. And that was one of the things that I really wanted to do is I wanted to pick off Gulf Farm Health and I wanted to pick off the sand shed before we took on any more bills. You know, it's like myself being in business, I pay off equipment, I buy more. I pay off, I buy more. And it's the same idea, this is no different than business, but we're in a little bit different circumstance because of the way we're doing the referendum vote. And the way that, um, everything's going right now, there's a lot of uncertainty that this felt like it was the least impact on the taxpayer all at once at this point in time.
Yep, that's correct. That's exactly how we discussed it. So, okay. Uh, any more discussion on that from anyone? So, we went to the school department articles. Uh, I didn't see anybody else raise their hand, I don't want to skip over anybody, so.
Nope.
Okay. Going to the school department articles?
So Superintendent Ross is here and the Finance Director, Kim Oliver, is here. I've unmuted both of them.
Okay. I think, uh, I think I'd like to ask either one of the two to just kinda go down through, give us a synopsis on, you know, all the, all the articles that may have gone up, down, or indifferent. Uh, I know a lot of the things were trying to hold the same, so.
Sure, I, I can just jump in real quick with a quick, uh, quick overview if you can, Ed. And then Kim can probably give you details on each article. But, but overall, um, we've made, made adjustments. We originally had a, it was Article 20 for paving and we found the additional $20,000 because of savings and COVID to do the paving. So we removed, um, an article we had for reserve, uh, a reserve account to finish our paving. We had one for three years. With an additional 20 would get us to the money that we needed to do the paving. So that was removed and I think sent from last year's budget. So what we're proposing is just, um, is a, is a little bit less than what we had last year, which is, um, which we're feeling pretty good about. But as each article comes up, if you have particular questions about any of those cost centers, either Kim or I can, can, uh, answer those.
Okay. Do we want to go down through each article?
Can probably do them as a, oh, Richard has a question.
Go right ahead, Richard.
Thank you, uh, just for the superintendent, you just, uh, before we start down the articles, how many students do they anticipate for next year versus this year?
All the same.
Sorry, sorry about that. Richard, that's, um, should be up about maybe 15 kids. Um, we're looking at a, a pretty robust, um, pre-K class. Other than that, our graduating class that graduated from Sanford High School is pretty much is the same as the incoming eighth grade class that'll be freshmen next year. So our group from K to A is static, that really hasn't changed. We have a few move in and a few move out, but our pre-K numbers look like they're gonna expand. So we could be up a few students there, but, um, you know, overall, it's, it's within, within 300, you know, to 325 kids when you include the high school kids.
Thank you.
Okay. So on the articles, like I said, I'm not gonna read every single article. We have, I guess actually, you know, everybody can see them on the screen. If someone has a question on a particular one, um, raise your hand. But as he says, the, the budget itself, you said, John, it was down slightly from last year?
Yeah, just, just under one, just under 1%. We, we saw some savings in, in some retirements. And then in our hiring, um, we got some excellent candidates that the school board approved that, um, have, you know, just a few years' experience. And we believe we can bring those people into Acton Elementary and kind of quote, teach them our way. And they'll be, they'll be great staff for the long run.
Okay.
Ed, um, if I could just real quick, so we've gotten a comment and I got a phone call. Um, if I can just speak to Michelle for a second. Michelle, can you minimize this and pull up the town's website so that everybody can see it? I just want to show everybody where the warrant is at, people are having trouble finding it. And, uh, that way, so as we go through them, if you want to read them in more detail, once the screen is gone, we would be able to, you'd be able to look at it and see where it's at. And then if you have additional questions, you can either join us the next public hearing or certainly send them in.
Yep, this will be for after this meeting is over, if you can go to your computer and see where, where it is on the town website.
Well, Michelle's gonna show them because they can't find it, is what they're saying.
Yep.
Thank you. So, right here, uh, yeah, uh, yeah, right here. So important notices, back to office hours. Um, so right here, the Board of Selectmen will be holding two public hearings regarding the 2020 warrant, which will be voted on by secret ballot. Please call the administrator with questions or click here, thank you, whoever's doing that. Click there and that will bring up the PDF warrant. So, um, for those of you messaging and calling, that's where it is, you can read it in more detail. Thank you, Michelle. Thanks, Ed.
Yep. Let's say this is the first time we've ever done this, so.
Yeah.
All information is good. Okay, you want to go back to the, uh, check for the warrant, please, Michelle? I don't think she realized she was gonna be half IT person tonight.
Oh, she's awesome, she's got this.
Okay, so you can look down through, um, and then, Michelle, can you open the left-hand screen, shrink that pad up a little bit? So we can, I'm only seeing, I'm seeing almost all the articles, almost, there we go.
I was gonna say, just hit play slideshow and that'll go away altogether.
Jennifer?
Yeah.
We're on the school right now, Judy Shane just texted me and said she couldn't get in. Is the host seeing her, looking to get into the meeting in the waiting room?
I'm looking at the participants right now. And there's no one in the waiting room. Does she click on the right link?
I'll, I'll text her and ask her to try again, thanks.
Yeah, have her check the, the link for the meeting. She might have hit the selectman one by mistake, but she's not in the waiting room at this meeting.
Will do, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so there's, there's the articles, we'll come down through Article 10. School committee. Well, let's see, system administration, school administration, student transportation, facility maintenance, I'm just going down through the articles. Uh, debt services is at zero. Other expenditures, including nutrition. If there's something on here that, uh, John or Kim, you think we should expand upon, please by all means, speak up.
Pretty much all the articles are very similar to where they were last year.
Okay. You go down through a little more there, okay. Little fund for education, K through 12, uh, 300, 3.8 million.
This article is basically because this, the way the state does their EPS formula, you have to have a minimum. This is the minimum for the essential programs, but it doesn't cover things like transportation, nutrition, um, hour stipend, uh, for, you know, extracurricular, co-curricular, that type of stuff. So all those are extras. So this is where the, uh, the state will say, you know, you need a minimum of like half a librarian and, um, you know, so many teachers per student and that type of stuff. So you have this minimum, so there's your 3.8 based on the number of students we have. And then, um, the second article is basically the difference in our budget to, to meet all the expenses for our school budget.
That's the 1.46.
Yeah, you, you add that to the, the 3.458 and that's where your, you'll come down to your, your, your total tax.
Okay. Okay. And the note I see on the bottom there, these two articles are a reduction of almost $41,000 from current year funding raised. So.
Oh, Joyce has a question, just a moment.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
I, I'm just curious about this budget. Not having an oar in the water, I've never had a child in school here. I do think our school system has done a phenomenal job with, uh, in the world of COVID. I have children who are teachers, so I know how difficult it is. Does this budget take into effect some of the, um, unknowns? If we're still in the world of COVID come September, uh, is there money in there to, again, allow for, uh, children to get food, for children to have the, I know, I think, I believe, I don't know for a fact. I believe every child had, um, text equipment or, or notebooks or whatever.
Yes. To school. Our school is pretty well set for, you know, if we have to do remote, we are, we're, we as a big collective group have been working on three different plans for September. You know, everything from least restrictive to most restrictive. This budget will, you know, basically fund, you know, e, whichever plan we go with. Um, and the state also has what's called Ursa funds, which also helps us with like our PPE equipment. If we buy masks and if we buy fans and we buy, um, you know, face shields, we have those all on order. And, you know, it's, it's an unknown of where we're gonna be in September, but we are, we are going to have summer school. And this is kind of a test for us to help us figure out, you know, what our plans are gonna be when we get into school in September. I can't answer, you know, exactly what we're gonna be doing because it's still unknown at this point. But, um, yes, this budget would, would, you know, it, it might not go for exactly how we budgeted it, but it will definitely would cover what we need, you know, whichever direction we go forward.
I think, I think Kim, Joyce, great question. I think Kim's last comment about it'll cover wherever we go is very prudent. Um, our budget was created prior to pretty much the COVID pandemic. We, we did, we started developing this in November based on our past expenses and our projections for student enrollment. And, um, our work was done prior to closing school on the, on the 15th of March. We were hoping to have a school budget vote in April 6th, of course, that couldn't happen. Um, and to just kind of sum everything up, um, every school in the nation and perhaps even internationally are facing the question of what does school like, look like when we open? And will our budgets be able to cover any additional costs? For us in ACT, and I think we're gonna be fine, as Kim mentioned, we, we're, we have to develop three different kinds of plans to open. And I think, um, you know, the extra cost of PPE and those kinds of things, personal protective equipment that we need to have in school, we're hoping that the federal funds that filter through the state um, and under the CARES Act, which is basically, not to get too technical, but we're gonna, we're gonna receive funding equal to our Title I allotment. And any additional costs that we, we bear due to COVID-19 instructions should be absorbed within those federal funds, absorbed through the state. So in a nutshell, yes, I think we're poised to be in good shape to support our kids, but no, this budget does not reflect pandemic because the pandemic had not hit when we were developing this particular budget.
I, I just, I think Acton Schools have done such a good job. I would hate to see the children and, or, or the, the school, all of us, in a fix because, you know, PPEs, special this, special that, and there just wasn't money for it. Um, I think it's a different world and we have to be prepared for that. So I'm glad to hear what you said. Thank you.
I appreciate your feedback. I think the staff, the staff, the teachers and the ed techs and the custodians have done a perfectly wonderful job given what very little time that they had to prepare. So thank you very much for that feedback.
Joyce, if I can, once, Richard, I see you, um, if I can just piggyback on that, the superintendent and his staff have also been very good communicating and working with the Board of Selectmen's Office. So that if, you know, something comes, certainly if they come to, come into a situation, um, where, you know, funds are an issue, I, I trust that the selectman will support, you know, addressing it right away. We've also had a lot of conversations through all of this pandemic, um, about, you know, the neighbors helping neighbors and what we can do to help feed and help those families and everything. So they're working with the selectmen, the superintendent's working with the selectmen's office as well to make sure that, um, you know, it's covered on all ends, but that is a good question.
Okay.
Richard, I think you had a question. Unmute.
I did, thank you. Uh, on Article 17, and I don't expect an answer to that, but there's another public hearing coming up. So for Superintendent Ross and Kim Oliver, 1.46 million additional money, how does that compare to other towns in the state? That's a high percentage, is my recollection. So could you, at the next public hearing, unless you want to do it now, give us some idea of where Acton, and it's, oh, the small K through A school system is, is ranked, is to play on this extra money?
Okay, I'm, I'm, I kinda, I just want to kind of clarify what Richard was saying because I, he kept breaking up a little bit, um, from what I could hear. But are you asking on, with Article 17, how we compare with other towns our size? Is that what you're asking?
So Kim, for, for other districts, uh, obviously it would be better to have a few comparison districts that are the same, municipal school districts, the same size as Acton. How much extra money are we raising compared to other similar school districts, uh, in the city?
I, I too missed the question. I, I, Richard, thank you, you know, I, I heard it that time. So Kim, we, yes, Richard, we do have comparables and as you know, I'm sure you know, that York County has much larger school systems than ACT and we're a very small school for the size of our county. And we're much like Southern Maine, we're, we're not a SAT or an RSU. However, we do look a lot like some Northern Maine and, and rural Washington County schools. And my comparables on programs and services have been with those schools. And I have a list of about six, I think, that I've used before with the, with the warrant. And we, we can certainly pull those numbers for you for the July 8th, uh, meeting.
Thank you.
Yeah, and also, also I think we need to remember that in ACT and a lot of these extra costs above, uh, the ES, the, um, essential programs and services is because we do want to ensure that even though we're a small school, that all of our children in ACT and have all of the same services that other schools have, like all of the specials and that they have the transportation and that they have all the other things that are not included in the essential programs and services. So the school board has traditionally and historically, um, tried to make sure that our kids get all of the services that other schools get, even though we are a small school district.
Okay. Yeah, and you have, uh, John, if you could have your breakdown on that, or Kim, for the, the next one, that'd be great.
You bet, we can do that, Ed, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep. Um, Article 18. Anybody has any questions on that? Okay, move on from that. I say, we'll just bring these up, if, if any of the members of the school committee have any questions or something you think you can, you want to throw out to us that would, uh, be pertinent?
So basically for Article eight, 19, and 20, these are basically, um, this is like permissions to be able to receive monies in from the federal grants and the state grants. So like our Title I, our Title II, our Title IV, our small rural grant. But we have to, because it, all, everything goes through our operating account. Um, so we don't have like six different accounts. This Article 19 allows us to expend and 20 allows us to receive the monies in. That's basically what it, these two articles are for. And 21, um, is basically, we also receive revenues for, um, federal revenues for our nutrition program. And we're expecting at least $8,000 in federal revenues to cover our nutrition.
This goes back to a little bit of what Joyce was asking, um, in regard to, especially moving into next year, not having any idea what the pandemic may or may not do. Um, if there were more monies from the feds to flow through the state to the local, this would allow us to accept those without having to go to, go to you every time something is being, something is being offered. So we want to be able to throw our hat in the ring, so to speak, if there are federal monies that flow our way. Um, if in fact, more, more CARES Act money comes our way. That's, that's just around the COVID issue, but, you know, every now and then we might come across a grant or federal monies that we can, um, access, and this allows us to do that.
Okay. I think we have a, we have a article on the town side very similar, so. Okay. That's a smaller dollar amount there, heating control panel system. So that's a, that's a, a repair to the infrastructure?
That's for, um, we're, we're actually asking to transfer from our undesigned funds, 15,000 to be set aside to, uh, go to the cost of a heating control panel system and the software that goes with it. Um, this is, I think, one of three payments. You know, again, we're kind of doing a very similar thing that we did with, with the paving. Um, it's, it's just a way to, you know, con- Um, it's, it's just a way to, you know, constantly kind of keep our long-term planning going, um, for capital expenditures, so.
Okay. What was Article 22? I think that brings us to the end of the school articles.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, just to remind everyone that is on here, then keep yourselves muted unless you're called upon or you are speaking. So I'll be making that every, every little bit, so. Okay, now we're on to the municipal side, unless anyone has any other questions for the school board or the, the folks from the school. Uh, I have to mirror what, uh, what was said earlier. They've done a tremendous job with the, you know, during the COVID and the shutdown and all, and they do a tremendous job overall, uh, even in a regular year.
Thank you.
I really wish my kids, you know, I wish I lived up here sooner and had my kids go through ACT and so, they're a great system, so.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay, we'll move on now to the municipal side or the town side. Um, let's see.
Kim, you're free to go.
What was that?
Good night, Kim.
I'm just.
She's got that look, sorry, she's got that look.
I was just, I was reading something.
Well, this is like, uh, like hour three into, into our meetings tonight, so.
Yeah, so, same with Mr. Ross. I mean, you guys are welcome to stay, but we understand if you want to step out, if it was vice versa, we'd step out. So thank you.
Yep, yep, yep.
Have a good night.
Thank you, Kim and John and the members of the school committee.
Thank you.
Okay, um, so I guess I just zipped out through these like we did before, like we do at the school. If there's anything here that someone sees they want to have more information on, please by all means wave your hand. Um, we'll try to, I keep going between my picture screens here to make sure I don't miss anybody. Um, some of these are, as I said earlier, um, housekeeping, some are, some are not. Article 25, for instance, that's one for municipal undisputed funds, tax-acquired properties. Uh, I guess either, uh, Michelle or Jen, you want to, is, you know, is there something on here that stands out that you want to?
No, we can go through them very quickly. Uh, Michelle had the screen, they were housekeeping. Article 23, uh, just allows the board to appropriate and expend monies, um, as for small items, anything over 5,000, we have to get the recommendation of the warrant and finance. That's the article that I think we used last time for the first time in probably 10 years.
Yep.
Article 24 allows you to dispose of town-owned equipment, except road equipment, anything that has a value less than $500. Um, Article 25 allows you to sell tax-acquired property. Uh, we always try to sell it back to the owner, talks about the process of how it happens and specifies that it can't be to a selectman or immediate family member. And then Article 26, uh, allows the selectman, upon request of the treasurer, to waive a foreclosure at a tax lien, uh, depending on the circumstances, um, and I think Michelle attested in one of our previous budget meetings that in the last at least seven years or so, we've never asked you to do that. So those are all regular housekeeping, same as last year.
Okay. Screen. Hate it when that happens. Go.
All right, Article four, uh, 27 is one of the articles that we, um, combined, but it's all, um, all the same information. This is, uh, sets when the due dates are, October 15th and April 15th for taxes. Uh, it authorizes us to accept prepayments, um, and, uh, one of the things, this is the article, right, Michelle, that the state revenue came out, uh, after we had gone to print and said that this was a typo and that 9% interest that they released to the entire state of Maine should actually be seven? Is that right, Michelle? Eight, eight, sorry. So even though they're going to vote it at 9%, when we go into Trio to commit taxes, we're going to be putting 8% in because eight is the maximum. Unfortunately, there was a typo and the revenue service sent that out. Uh, Article 28 allows the selectmen to, um, execute documents related to grants or donations, um, and just reiterates that all grants need to go through the treasurer's office. Article 29, another housekeeping, allows the town to vote and accept revenues from MEMA or FREMA monies, um, at the discretion of the Board of Selectmen. So again, housekeeping articles that haven't changed since last year.
The one thing I'm not seeing on here is the recommendations from the Board of Selectmen or the Warrant Finance Committee.
Yeah, because she just made, um, a slide, she made a slideshow to go through this. Um, but the warrant that's on the town's website does have them. Um, short of that first article, everything has a positive vote, there may be a one straggler on a couple of the warrant and finances, but they are on there.
Yep, yeah, I believe everything from the selectmen's side was a.
The five and a three though, yep. And when we have the more official one on July 8th, we'll make sure the recommendations are shown.
Okay.
This is really just informational.
Yep. Okay.
All right, Article 30, go ahead, Michelle.
So this, um, carries over all the fund balances that we, um, have historically carried over, um, basically capital improvement reserves, um, nothing, nothing different from years past.
All the accounts, everything is the same, they're all in the same place?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, um, Article 31 allows the town to accept any and all funds from the state and use them appropriately. Uh, Article 32 allows them to use anticipated revenues. Uh, there is a little, a change here that we're not putting the amount of revenues in the bud, in the actual warrant article, uh, because of everything going on. Uh, we did list out for the request of warrant and finance, the revenue categories, so they could see them there. Um, Article 33 is the overdraft, uh, question. Unfortunately, we, um, see it most years, uh, by law, you can overdraw winter maintenance and general assistance. Uh, these numbers are, are fairly low, but this is the amount they were drawn last year. All right, so now we're moving on to the municipal budget. Uh, one of the key points that Michelle points out here is that all municipal wages have been flatlined the current year. So whether you were the town clerk, a transportation employee, or a fire department member, all wages have been flatlined.
I was just going to say, I don't think we have any that fall into contracts or anything like that, so.
No, we don't have any, anything like that.
Yep, so they were frozen.
So Article 34, um, if you wanted to take the time, um, and maybe something we can do for the next one, um, but if you wanted to take the time to go to the town's website and look at last year's, the current approved budget, um, that we're, that we're looking at, if you look at the same article versus this year, uh, you'll see that it's a reduction of $27,066, so that general government, which covers everything from the selectmen's office to the, um, all, all the offices really in the building and downstairs, um, all of the assessment, all of our contracts, our equipment, everything is in here, um, all of the benefits. This is, uh, down $27,000, so that's, that's impressive.
One thing that we did change that stands out here is the gym electricity. Last year, I think we had, what, close to $4,000 in, in there for the gym, um, to, to run the gym. Um, there's some question as to what's going to happen with it and we quite a discussion with the Warrant and Finance Committee. Uh, we decided this year to fund it for just the electricity in the building and see where we go from there. Um, it's been shut down since March. Um, I, even though the state says some of these places can reopen, I'm not so sure whether we're able to because of no staff and things of that nature. So the electricity, we felt as though you, you know, in the middle of winter, you're going to go in and turn the lights on to see what it looks like. Um, even if we drain the water and whatnot, we don't necessarily have to heat it if we're not using it. So that's, that's the one thing that stands out there to me, so. Okay. Onward.
All right, Article 35 is the, um, town to vote and raise and appropriate the money for our health stipend and general assistance. Um, we lowered our general assistance by a thousand dollars. Uh, we did that based on, uh, the need and, uh, really also because of our neighbors helping neighbors, the accounts were able to pick up some of the, um, some of the need there from that account from donation. So another, uh, cost savings on behalf of the board of selectmen. Uh, fire department, uh, raising and appropriating, uh, 664,183. Uh, there is an increase here, 33,000, which is, uh, really because of the additional, um, position. Um, when the previous fire chief left and this one came on, he became part-time and we took some of the extra money from the previous full-time and turned it into a full-time firefighter medic. Um, and the difference of that money is here. So the way that works now, you used to only have one paramedic and whoever was on shift with them, um, and depending on what that individual worked, there was times that there was no paramedic. So now this covers, this gives ACT and the paramedic, uh, seven days a week, correct, Michelle?
Yes.
Yeah, so, um, that's good. Uh, raise and appropriate, Article 37 is 54,000 for public safety. Uh, this is our streetlights, animal control, EMA, communications and EMA director. Uh, there is an increase of $1,992, which she says is from contractual obligations. So that's going to be under communications, Michelle?
Um, communications and, um, animal control cell phone.
Oh, yes, okay. That was one of the new expenses this year, but you can't, you know, you, you can't expect somebody, an animal control officer in any town to be on, on call, um, in any town and not have a phone. Michelle, that reminds me completely off, off base, but we need to look into whether or not Shapley's paying half of that phone bill.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. Article 38. Okay, so Article 38 is to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, uh, will vote to pay wages and equipment for repair and maintenance of the public ways accordingly. Now, this article had some change to it, um, if you followed along Board of Selectmen meetings or workshops right around COVID, there was discussion about changing the road commissioner's staff to independent contractors. So essentially the road commissioners will be town employees, but anybody working for them will be independent contractors. Um, after discussion back and forth, the Board of Selectmen did vote to move forward with that, so these numbers look a little different, um, because they are in the corporation of the equipment with the operator. Um, as far as an increase, Michelle, over last year, how do these numbers compare?
Uh, so the numbers, um, other than the four-wheel drive, 2,600 in winter road equipment, um, there was a little bit of an increase there because the numbers, uh, in first discussions, uh, the numbers, it didn't make sense, the, the difference between the two-wheel drive and four-wheel drive. Other than that, all the other rates are the same.
Okay. Um, one of the other things that they added there is that, uh, just for clarification, I think this came from Warrant and Finance, I mean, we wanted to make sure that the voter understood that if the road commissioner themselves is operating the equipment, um, they're not getting that amount or deducting the 2701, which is the estimated, uh, the up to cost for the employee. So they would be paying, for example, for this, um, the four-wheel drive, one ton, she would take the 7038, less the 2701, pay him that amount for the one ton, and then he'd get his $30 an hour, assuming he was the operator. Um, the bottom, um, print, I don't think has changed any, um, other than I think they added the word exclusively. Uh, one of the concerns that came up was that the cutting edges in bolts make sure they're only being used for winter maintenance. But actually, I can see Michelle's face, something else was taken out of there. I, as soon as you had that face, I knew I missed something. There's about another line.
The brushes.
Brushes, thank you, the brushes.
We're taking.
The town, town is no longer paying for the brushes.
We, we are, we, what we did is we made an increase on the attachment so they can pay for their own. So one way they are getting paid for the brushes, we just, we're not exclusively paying for them wherever they go get them.
All right, um, anything, so I think that's that one, I'm scrolling through on that same question, so. Okay, Article 39 is for the actual road maintenance. So you've got a breakdown of District 1 and 2. Um, you can see winter maintenance, general maintenance, paving and reconstruction, and then the sand installed in public works, building. Um, this increased, everything is flatlined except for the increase of paving. Uh, the Board of Selectmen, you know, when they were taking a hard look at the, the warrant and the budget, uh, they all agreed that the paving and the roads is one area that, that, you know, really, uh, lacked some attention and they know that they need to put some extra paving money in, so, um, they've given both road commissioners, if the budget passes, $51,000 extra in paving and all of the other lines stay outlined.
I believe the original number there was 100,000 apiece.
Ninety-nine. Ninety-nine, yeah, well, one of them wanted 99 and one of them wanted.
Yeah, when, when COVID hit and we had to do some head number crunching, uh, this is what it came down to, so.
And I, I think that they're both appreciative to have an increase in the paving and even to have their, you know, that amount, so.
It hasn't increased in years.
Right.
Yep. By years, I mean.
A step in the right direction, that's for sure.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Um, Article 40 is the transfer station, uh, 296,276, um, very minimal increase there. It is due to contractual obligations of the pickups of the material, uh, nothing to do with wages, those were flatlined as well, so, um, there shouldn't be any concerns there. The forest committee is asking for the same amount, 250, no increase. Um, planning, the forestry stipend is the same, no increase. $3,000 for the conservation or the, I gotta move my box, I'm sorry, I'm only getting half of it. The cemetery committee, um, is actually a reduction of $250. Last year they had asked for a little extra because they had a couple of projects they wanted to do, got, got those done, so they're back down a little bit. All right, the next Article 44, um, the next couple of articles are, you're going to see our, um, social services. Uh, the Board of Selectmen, it really went back and forth and had a lot of conversation about how the best way to handle these were. Um, if we were at a regular open town meeting, we would have them individually, one line at a time, so that, you know, if you truly had an issue with the food pantry, you could vote down just the food pantry. Um, there was some concern about how, uh, an article was, how it ended up a few years back, so we changed it to one at a time. However, we are currently looking at a six-page town ballot, so keeping them all individual really, um, wasn't an option. So the board has, um, combined them into three articles as they see best fit. Uh, the first one, $9,946, you can see the social services listed there. It is a $2 increase, um, and if you're wondering why my flight went up $2, that is simply, we believe last year they actually requested 612 and we must have put it in for 610, so. Uh, they didn't ask for more. Anybody that asked for more, any social service that asked for more, uh, Michelle, remind me, we, we put the number forward that was approved last year, correct?
Correct.
Right. So if the voters cut the food pantry last year, even if they asked for four grand this year, if the voters gave 2,500 last year, we put that number in. So there is no increase here, whatever they were approved last year, um, is the number that you're going to see here. Article 45 is the next few, um, social services. Uh, you've got the, the historical society, the library, the cemetery and the Trachten Center. Um, again, we tried grouping these together as ones that, that, uh, the board felt were somewhat similar, a zero increase there. The last one are all, are all water-related, $36,000, um, also zero increase there. Article 47 is the, uh, dam expenditure, $10,900. This is for the Coalition Annual Maintenance, this is for the Dam Improvement Fund and the Balch Lake. And the decrease, Michelle, is because of the work they did last year?
Yeah, the work they did last year, we were, uh, we were putting into, uh, the MWDC Capital Improvement Fund, um, for a couple of years in preparation for that big project, but that wasn't in their budget this year.
Perfect, so we like to see decreases. Article 48, um, asks you to raise some portion of the money and appropriate another portion. This is all, uh, tied to the ACT and Public Access TV. Um, as you know, if you get Metricast cable in ACT and, uh, they do charge a fee, uh, letting people in, they do charge a fee, a franchise fee, that franchise fee is turned around and given to the town of ACT and, um, and that money is used to run the channel. Um, this channel has been in existence now for many years and unfortunately, one of the things that it doesn't do is replace equipment. And as we all know, with technology and electronics, as time goes, things change. So, uh, the $11,120 is a capital improvement purchase that is needed to keep this channel running. Article 49, um, 49 is to see if the town will vote to raise 20,372 and appropriate 23,972 for the operation of the rec and to allow them to use, uh, $3,000 of anticipated revenues. Um, this was one of the articles that we changed, um, kind of at the last minute because as COVID struck, it really took a toll on, okay, what are we going to do about sports? There's a. This original revenue number was as high as five or six thousand dollars based on previous years, but obviously, if we can't have certain seasons, they're not gonna get the revenues. So the board met with the rec committee, um, the treasurer made a recommendation, we got it down to three thousand. There is a three hundred dollar typo here, is it three hundred or six hundred?
Six.
Six. The article doesn't change, but if you add it, it's six thousand, uh, but either way, it's a decrease of over a thousand dollars. Uh, the six hundred dollars is just adding the two together and it doesn't do anything to the taxes, prove the way, you know, if it passes the way it is. Article fifty is to allow the rec committee to put two thousand dollars, um, or to use two thousand dollars for the field and parking area. Zero dollars raised here because they're using existing funds. Um, Article fifty-one, which we've seen, I think, just for the last couple of years now, um, allows the rec committee to appropriate any appropriate revenues that they, now it doesn't say expend, is that part of it, Michelle, appropriate and expend, or just appropriate?
Appropriate and expend are the same.
Okay.
I mean, the same.
So it allows them to appropriate and expend, so what this means is that if they decided to have a fundraiser and do a car wash and they got X amount of dollars, um, as a fundraising revenue, that they would be able to, um, appropriate and expend it if it exceeded the budget, um, in Article forty-nine, meaning you, they already had these three thousand dollars revenue, anything above that, it allows them to spend.
Okay.
Thank Mr. Walsh, that was a quick rundown.
That is all articles.
The last page is, um, is a budget to be raised by taxation, it's a comparison of each article, um, what the description is, what the current budget is by taxation, and you can see that the total net increase with taxation is two thousand nine hundred and seventy-four dollars. Um, and based on, if this budget passes the way that it is, even with the less revenues, uh, the board of selectmen will be able to keep the tax rate the same at twelve oh-five with no increase.
That was.
Oh, look at that.
Yep.
Nice.
The budget will allow for that for state personal property to remain the same for twenty twenty, and, uh, she's got a, a link there, and I think that she'll put this nice, um, slideshow on the, the, um, website so people can see it there. We'll also, Michelle, send it over to Mike Corey and, uh, he can run it on the cable channel, um, and I just wanna take a minute to thank you for doing that. I recall now you mentioning it, I'm sorry I didn't look at it in advance, but as all of your work, it is exceptional, thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Yep. Yeah, it's been a very challenging budget time. Things went along pretty well and then COVID hit and everything got turned upside down, and the first thing that we decided to do was freeze as much as we possibly could, um, which I think we've met that goal, and I give a tremendous amount of credit to both Michelle and Jennifer for doing that. I mean, they, they, they are the two that, um, manage the budget for the, for the town as far as how, how things are put together and where we can save and where we can't, so.
Uh, not to interrupt you, Ed, but Mr. Naff has a question.
Oh, yes, go ahead, I was just looking up and saw that. Go ahead, Richard.
Just for Jennifer, when are absentee ballots available?
Richard, great question.
As soon as you can, yes, get some toys.
So we have all of the state absentee ballots, we will not deny anyone a state absentee ballot, calling the record for saying that. The school, uh, the town ballots, um, have been promised to be in my possession by Thursday or Friday, so basically, if people come in and request one, if they're not leaving the country, we're taking their name and phone number and we'll mail them by the end of the week. Um, we can mail them separately if someone really is leaving or wanted to, but we are trying our hardest not to do that because it becomes very complicated.
Well, I'm confused, Jennifer, when can I get the whole package of absentee ballots?
Friday, I will add you to my list.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I, um, Jennifer will probably shoot me for this, but I would like to have everybody, you know, encourage people to do absentees. It's gonna be quite challenging, running people into the building and, you know, voting in the booths, so anyone that can do an absentee, uh, I think it's probably the better way to go, wouldn't you agree, Jennifer?
Absolutely, I mean, it's, we are definitely looking at some very trying times, and I don't wanna spend a whole lot of time on this because I'm sure I'm not the only one waiting for dinner, um, but the Secretary of State has sent an updated, um, list over about, oop, about the do's and don'ts and how election day is going to look, um, and we are talking about, um, you know, sanitizing every single pen between, you know, after a voter uses it, we are talking about, you know, not having curtains up. I mean, the stipulations are going to be extremely so strict that, you know, we are going to have staff just to, you know, just for disinfecting, I mean, we're just for all these extra things, um, based on the square footage of the, um, based on the square footage of the building is gonna determine how many people we can actually let in at a time, so we're still sorting all that out, and I apologize, I'm not the only one waiting for dinner here, you can see. There's Moose who thinks it's time.
Yeah, so let's hope for, hope for a decent day weather-wise, because if, yeah, we don't even wanna discuss that one.
Let's not talk about that, we, we don't wanna get that in Jen's head right yet.
No, 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 there's enough going on in there right now.
Oh, that's nice.
Well, there is, if you're a busy person, so. Okay, um, yeah, so we will be having another one of these public hearings, and that is July eighth.
Seven o'clock.
Yep, seven o'clock right here. Uh, look for the link on the town website, because the numbers change every time we have a Zoom meeting, so.
It's already on there.
Yep, uh, Roland, your hand was waving, or were you squatting flies?
Nope, I'm, I muted him.
Okay. Not yet. Hey, oop. You keep muting and unmuting.
Go ahead, Dan, I'm not touching it. Hold on, Roland, we can't hear you.
Yep.
Give Dan a second to figure it out.
Roland, can you hit the unmute button on your?
There we are, Roland, there you go.
Got me?
Gotcha, go ahead.
Uh, I wish to commend the board and our town employees with putting forward this amazing effort. I also wish to bring to your attention that there are many folks within town who do not have internet, who do not have computer access, and they are kind of left out. I know that we are not going to be able to hit every one of the twenty-three hundred registered voters with information. However, I have several individuals, one that lives right around the corner from me and about ninety-some-odd years old, and I'm sure you can figure out who it is, uh, she has no idea what's going on, she does have a copy of the warrant, and she had many questions when I spoke to her about four days ago.
So if I can just, oop, sorry, if I can just interject for one second, Roland, so, uh, the board of selectmen did do a mailing, and it went to, um, all of the registered voters in the town of Acton that were active, meaning that they've participated in at least one of the three, uh, so that resident that you're, you're, you're mentioning certainly should have gotten it. Um, we're passing them out at the counter as well, uh, we've got them online, we've got them everywhere, anywhere that somebody would have gotten notice of the town meeting being posted, um, we've gone above and beyond, and like I said, we have mailed out, um, over, over a thousand envelopes. Your envelope will say voter at, you know, one twenty-three Main Street. In there, it clearly says, if you do not have access to, to any computer or the internet and you have questions, comments, you wanna sit down and go through the warrant articles one by one, call the administrator, a selectman will be assigned to you, I just added that part, and they'll go through the articles with you one at a time and get all your questions answered. So, you, you know, we're doing the best that we can, but we rely on people like you, Roland, to help us get that word out of that mailing, because you're right, you're never gonna hit everybody, but based on the trying times, that mailing was a huge step, and the board, you know, you just have to continue to be vocal and, and talk to your neighbors and check in with them.
I understand what you're saying, Jennifer, and I greatly appreciate it. Um, you know, Claire, I'm sure.
No, don't fuck with me.
In the mail, I have not received mine, but that's okay, 'cause I know what's, what's on the warrant, and I know the pros and cons to all of it. Um, there was something else I wanted to, uh, bring up, and, oh, God, I hate getting old. I'll save it for the, oh, I know what it was, Jen. Is there a way that you can ascertain how many people attended or took part in this public hearing?
Fifteen, tops.
Wow, that's terrible.
Well, you say that, but there's always the flip side, and, and sometimes the flip side is people watching these board of selectmen meetings, hearing the conversations going on at the transfer station, running into Ed at the grocery store, and saying, listen, we've taken all the zoning off, we have flatlined and no employee anywhere is getting an increase. This is what we've done, these are the steps, this is what your tax rate's gonna be, maybe they don't have questions, so we can't assume them not coming is the worst. Sometimes, knowing that information, people talk to me on a regular basis out the window, I give no opinions on how to vote, but those are the important factors that they're asking. Well, you didn't do, I mean, they love, you know, the idea that the board took everything controversial off, short of the truck, because that wasn't necessary, and everything is flatlined, maybe they're not attending because their, their mind is already made up.
I, I'd like to chime in on this a little bit, um, we're like the, for all there's, you know, we were sending out a thousand mailings, last year, we didn't send out a thousand mailings, okay? Our selectmen meetings, we're lucky to get maybe twelve on a good night. Uh, our town meeting, we normally get about forty-five, if you get sixty, it's, wow, okay? So by sending out a thousand, those people that you're talking about that are misunder, you know, misinformed or whatever, it's because.
Uninformed.
Uninformed, I'm sorry. Those people.
I'm not far calling.
They're, they're, they're not coming to meetings anyways.
Right.
They're not going to town meetings. Now they're getting a, they're gonna get a letter in the mail like they did last year, so they're more informed than they were last year, so, 'cause everybody knows the same people come to the selectmen's meetings every week.
And, and just to piggyback, because I don't want, I don't want David's comment to, to be Mrs. True, when he says, you know, he, I hear him saying a number of less than fifty and, and people are saying, oh, maybe we could add that open town meeting, you gotta remember two things, this time the school and town are combined, and last year, um, you know, with the Seventh Street article or when Article forty-three happened in June, we actually had closer to eighty, eighty-plus people. So we're automatically over the fifty as town meeting, and then you add the school, which honestly is a completely different group of people usually, um, we're definitely gonna be over there. And the other piece too is that, you know, YouTube and this channel is, is a big part of it, you know, when, when, when Dan posts this to Mike Corey and Mike Corey posts it to YouTube and somebody shares it on What's, What's Up in Acton, you don't gonna have twice as many reviews on it than, you know, than people that attended, so people use different methods to, to review it.
I understand that, and, you know, I greatly, like I said, I greatly appreciate everybody's effort. I, I think that, you know, uh, the town has done a, a wonderful job in trying to, you know, accommodate everything that has to be done. Uh, just, you know, feel that, you know, it's prudent to make mention that there are people who don't have access and, you know, I mean, it's, you know, unfortunately, you know, you're not gonna be able to reach everybody, so.
Nope, and you wouldn't with the regular warrant posting.
That's true, and, you know, I mean, I've been at a lot of town meetings and, you know, you start the meeting off and you might have eighty or ninety people, and by the time you get maybe a third of the way through the warrant, that eighty or ninety has dropped down to thirty-five or forty. You know, I mean, which is terrible.
Yep.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, we're gonna have, we're gonna have more people voting in this town meeting than I think Acton has ever had in the past.
We'll see. We'll see.
But we know it's gonna be more than eighty.
I thought, I sort of hope that, uh, the, will be much better, so.
Yeah.
Again, thank you very much for.
Thank you, Roland, appreciate the kind words.
You're welcome.
If anybody else doesn't have anything else to go over on this, I think we're done with the public hearing. I'd like to thank everyone that attended it. Uh, once again, it will be shared on YouTube, it'll be on the town channel, um, for folks to see that have access, and we'll have another one on July eighth. So with that, I think we're done, so I'm gonna say goodnight, everyone, and stay safe. We'll see you round the corner, thank you.